We're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you guys for being here this evening. My name is Mary Pat White side. I am currently serving as the P T S O president for the high school. Um, myself, as well as each president for the other campuses make up a president's council. And the president's council had the privilege of putting together this forum um for the community. So our hope and our goal tonight is just for you guys to get to know the candidates better. Um, especially with election day coming up on May third. Um, and then early voting begins tomorrow and goes through the twenty ninth. Um, okay, I do want to introduce the president's council members briefly. So um, serving as the P T O president at um, P T O president at Howard is Lauren Ludwig. Um, at Cambridge Elizabeth Merso, at Glidridge Jamie Kimball, and here at the junior school, Tanya Ever. So thank you guys for your help tonight. As a president's council, we did collect questions from the community on what you wanted to hear from the candidates. We took that information and narrowed it down to ten questions, which is what you're going to hear them respond to this evening. Um, there will be no Q and A tonight. But if you have additional questions for the candidates, if you want clarification on anything, I know both of them would love to share with you guys, please reach out to them individually. If you're a member of a P T O from one of the campuses, you received an email today with a voter's guide. Their personal email addresses are listed. If you are not a member of a P T O, if you have not seen that voter's guide, there are some Q R codes in the back. So scan that and you'll be able to get their contact information. Um, okay, the event will be recorded. It's not live streamed, but we'll have that link for you guys to share with other people in the community who weren't able to be here. And then lastly, I did want to introduce two individuals that are candidates, but they are running unopposed. But I wanted you guys to have a face with a name. So if y'all can stand as I introduce you. David Hornberger is running unopposed in place one. Thank you, David. And then Hunter Kingman is running unopposed in place four. Um, and I am now going to hand this over to Deanna Ricaba, who is our moderator this evening.
Thank you, and thank you for putting us together. And thank you all for um, being willing to serve this district. We are all very proud of it, and so I appreciate it. Okay, so the forum, we're expected maybe about thirty minutes is what we're thinking. Um, before we got started, the candidates flipped a coin um to determine who will speak first. Uh, and then we'll alternate after that. Um, we're gonna have introductions and each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves. And then there are ten questions and you'll have one minute to answer. And they have not been, uh, they have not seen these questions ahead of time. Um, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. So are we ready?
Ready.
Okay, so um, Mr. Bl- uh, Blazi is gonna go first with his opening segment.
Awesome. Well, thank you all for coming out tonight. Uh, appreciate y'all wanting to know more about us and make your decision based on that. So I, Tim Blazi again. Um, my family has been in the district for about ten years now. Uh, we have two little girls. We have a, they're sitting back there containing themselves for now. We have an eight-year-old at Cambridge in Spanish immersion and a three-year-old that will be starting pre-K at Howard um in the fall. Um, a little about me. So I was born and raised in the Northside School District. Um, my mom was a teacher for thirty-five years in the special ed department. Um, and I've been born and bred in public schools, uh, went to U T S A uh for a while, then went over to A and M San Antonio as well. Um, so I've been sharpened by the public schools. Um, one of the reasons why I am running honestly is I'm, I'm not a politician. I have no aspirations to be one. So if you see me glancing on my piece of paper, it's a cheat sheet, uh, because this is not my normal setting. Um, but I want to listen and collaborate on any of the ideas that are needed to take place uh for retention of teachers and, and students. I think that's one of the biggest things right now is just making sure that we stay engaged, making sure that we go with the right direction that our students need and that the educators need to be able to teach them the best that they can. Um, and I have the time, I have the availability. I've met with numerous people on the board um just to make sure that I could submit the right time and take this seriously. And I'm more than willing to step up and I'm more than willing to make sure that I stay on track and do what I can um to help guide my kids as well as future kids in this district.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bryant?
Good evening, and thank you all for attending tonight's forum. And before I get started, I'd like to thank the P T O for putting this on. There's a lot of coordination that goes behind the scenes, and I appreciate your time and energy. I'd also like to recognize Brian Hamilton. Uh, Brian has served and has served on the school board for the last six years. Uh, he served during very time uh during COVID, which was trying for this community, and I appreciate his leadership during that time. Uh, Brian decided not to run for reelection this year, which opened up his seat. And as soon as I became aware of vacancy, I submitted my application. I've been thinking about running for the board. Timing wasn't right um at certain times, but it is now. And I feel like I have the time to effectively serve if given the chance. So just a little bit about me. I grew up in San Antonio and attended Heights back in the early nineties. It's hard to believe. It was thirty-plus years ago. Uh, but I still have great memories of the teachers challenging me in the classroom and the coaches challenging me on the court. I also have great friends that I started here and still remain friends today. So when my husband and I had the opportunity to move back to San Antonio, it was without question that we would come to Alma Heights uh because of the tight-knit community that is here and also the excellent education for our kids. So now fifteen years later, we have four children at various stages within the education, uh, within the district here, at high school, at the junior school, and at the elementary school. Not only are they in different schools here, but because of their different personalities, I have kids in Spanish immersion. I have a kid that's in the dyslexia program, as well as the gifted and talented program. So a wide range of experience for sure. I purposely didn't give you any hard-hitting facts right now about me and why I'm the best fit for the position. Rather, I wanted to introduce Karen, the mom. I'm committed to this community and committed to excellence in education. I hope through this series of questions that'll be asked today, I can talk about my experience that I have in board leadership as well as my professional experience. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And you all have agreed to the rules of the road here, so I don't need to remind you. Didn't mean friendly, so. Um, okay, Ms. Bryant, this question will be for you. Um, A I S D is known for its tradition of excellence. What do you think our district does well to contribute to this standard?
Thank you for the question. Um, first and foremost, it's the teachers. The teachers make it what it is today. Um, they have high standards for themselves and they have high standards for our students. I also think that, um, again, back to that tight-knit community, we are a community that works together during trying times. And I look back at COVID and the years that we went through. We all came together as a community um to do what's best for the teachers and also the students during that time. So now we're faced with the challenge of school finance. And again, I feel the community is coming together to address that issue. So that's, those are some of the questions or answers for the excellence.
Mr. Blazi, A I H, A H I S D is known for its tradition of excellence. What do you think our district does well to contribute to this standard?
Um, so yes, I, I do, my wife graduated from Heights. I had a lot of friends growing up at Clark that went to Heights as well, and I've always heard great things. I've been inundated in the district now, like I said, for about ten years. And as soon as we started having kids, we wanted to make sure we participated and found a way into the district as well. And I really do think that the educators that we have currently um are a big facet to that. And I think that we need to be able to maintain that so that our students do get the best education. And um, with this community and with how we pitch in and help out to offset those financial needs, um, I think goes a long way in showing what we're able to do to help as a community as well as our educators.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, Mr. Blazi, what do you consider the most important responsibilities of a school board member?
Um, so there are seven of us, and we need to maintain collaboration. We need to maintain the thought process that goes into it. And it's gonna sound redundant with some of these questions, but like I said, making sure that our educators and students are going down the right path, not only for my kids, but generations to come, I think is extremely important. I'm sorry, I forgot the question.
What, the most important responsibilities of a school board member?
Yes, uh, so collectively, uh, after talking with some of the board members and just kind of gave an idea of where everybody sits, I feel like collectively we are all very aligned as far as where this district needs to go and how it needs to maintain its paths. And I think that it's always gonna continue going down to educators and students to move forward.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Bryant, what do you consider to be the most important responsibilities of a school board member?
The three major roles that the board play are hiring and acquiring superintendent, setting a policy for the school district, and approving the budget. Um, that takes a lot of work and, but to mention around collaboration. I think also when we are faced with initiatives or um projects that we might not know about, we need to do the extra work to become educated on that so we can represent the interests of the community. But I'd get back to the three points of approving the budget, setting a policy, and hiring superintendent.
Okay, thank you. This question will be for you, Ms. Bryant. What relevant, relevant experience do you bring to the school board that will enable you to make a positive impact on our schools?
Well, I've talked about my children that are here in the district. Um, we've been in the district for the last six years and again, the next nine years, my daughter's in third grade. And so on a given day, I understand how my kids are interacting with the district and how the district is interacting with my children. Um, along with that is the professional experience I have. Uh, today I work for a health system doing strategic planning and business development. But prior to that, I was involved in hospital administration. So I understand the demands of administrators. Um, I understand the demands of recruiting top talent. I understand the demands of operating a budget and also with advocacy, advocacy at the state level. So um, that along with previous board membership that I've had, I've served, when you look at collectively sixteen years of local nonprofit board membership and leadership. Last six years, I was on the school board, local school board here in town. Uh, and in two of those years, I was the finance chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blazi, what relevant experience do you bring to the school board that will enable you to make a positive impact on our schools?
Um, so for me, my, my job is I oversee a team of about ten on the general construction side. Um, I manage budgets. I manage not bonds, but I manage people's money in the corporate setting. Um, and I feel like my financial duties and my day-to-day duties um rely very heavily on making sure that the outcome is very positive for anybody that's involved. And I feel like I can bring that as well as the leadership um to the table for the board. I think it's gonna be additional diversity to the board as well, which is always needed. Um, and I think going forward, um, that should be a positive and a strength that, that will work out favorably.
Okay, thank you. This question will be for you, Mr. Blazi. With recent conversations around education savings accounts, share your thoughts on school finance and vouchers in one minute or less.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good question. And um, so when it comes to vouchers, I, I do disagree with the vouchers program. I do think that it's inherent that we're already in a disability. When it comes to finance within the public education, uh, vouchers will make that worse. Um, and in a school district like Alma Heights where the strength is keeping on the educators as well as the students, we need to be able to maintain the amount of population that we have in the school district. I do feel like those vouchers are definitely gonna take away from that. Um, as I said, collectively, there's, there's seven of us. Um, it's not a one-person strategy, but I believe all seven of us will have the same directive to find the best outcome and avenue forward to strengthen the district with what we've been given.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Bryant, with recent conversations around education savings account, share your thoughts on school finance and vouchers.
Well, it's been a heated topic for sure, and the jury's still out on whether this is a good path for Texas. Uh, it does look like it's gonna pass. Um, but I think that we need to focus on what we have here within the district and our community and focus in the short term on things we can control. And um, we have a great foundation. We have a great community of givers. What I think has been positive about this is that we've been able to tell the story to the community on what we are lacking, where are the funds going, and how much money do we need per student, and where do we fill that gap? Um, but I think in terms of the vouchers themselves, we'll, we'll see what the outcome is. But I do feel like we need to focus in on, on what, things we can control. In the long term, it is around advocacy. Uh, we deal with this in healthcare where our reimbursement structure can change with time, and we need to lean on our state and federal dollars in order to fill that gap.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Bryant, as a follow-up to that question on school finance, elaborate on your budget priorities.
The budget priorities really are going to be around ensuring that we have the academic rigor um that we want to continue within the school district. Additionally, we need to be able to retain and recruit top talent. Again, those are issues that I deal with within healthcare, and it is, it is a struggle. Um, what I feel like we need to do in order to retain top talent is really give them a culture and a voice where they feel like they're involved, they have control over their own destiny. Uh, but those two are focus areas along with the bond that is a huge project for us. We need to ensure that we meet our goals of the twenty twenty-three bond and create an environment for good excellence in education.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Blazi, as a follow-up to the school finance question, elaborate on your budget priorities.
Uh, so my budget priorities are gonna be based around retention as well. Um, we, we really need to find it within to find avenues that we can offset that thousand-dollar a student, uh, thirteen-hundred-dollar a student allotment that we don't have. And with it being state-funded, we do, you know, we have our hands tied to some degree. And I believe there's a lot of very smart, diverse people on this board. We can find avenues. There's a lot of stuff that is over my head that I am still learning about. Uh, but there are plenty of avenues out there, and I think collectively we can find the right direction and the right avenue to be able to fill that void and give our students what they need.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Bryant, as a, oh no, we're, I'm sorry. Mr. Blazi, back to you. As a school board member, aside from budgetary issues, where would you target your attention for areas of improvement?
So uh, one of the things that I'm running on is there's almost forty-seven hundred kids, probably a little bit more than that by now, in the district, and they all have a voice. They all need to be heard. Um, with the strength and the background of Alma Heights and the excellence that the program does have, there, there are areas and small groups within the collective that I think have more voice, more power than others. And one of my cores is gonna be to reach out to as many of those people that I can find that may not have been heard but have valid concerns and may not just have the feeling that they can express those. And I feel like by reaching out, by making sure that everybody is heard, um, we can, we can bring that back and expand what we know and how we can tailor fit better um as a community.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bryant, as a school board member, aside from budgetary issues, where would you target your attention for areas of improvement?
So we need to look at our teachers. We need to look at the families and the students and make sure that we are giving them the best experience possible. Um, Drucker is a great comment or quote of his is what you do not measure, you do not manage. And I think we do a great job in measuring a lot of inputs within this school district. We do satisfaction surveys with our teachers and families. We just did the February survey, and we got a lot of information. We have the community-based accountability systems where we're measuring data. And what we need to do is ensure that we're acting on that data to have positive outcomes. I see this again within healthcare. In my large organization that I work in, we're tracking a bunch of data, but we need to be able to act on it and act on it in a positive manner.
Okay, thank you. This question is for you. What would you do to aid in the hiring and retention of competent and equipped administrators in the school district to ensure a high standard of learning?
Well, I think um, having competent people comes from experience, education and experience. And so we need to ensure that we have the right people sitting in the right seats. Uh, I think back to the teachers and ensuring that they have the right culture and they feel like their voice is heard. We need to create an environment, and I'm not saying we don't do that today, because I do feel like the school district and the leadership definitely create an environment for our teachers to flourish and thrive. The P L Cs that we've created, the professional learning communities, is one of that way in which they come together, they share ideas and best practices, and then bring them to the classroom. So I think continuing on that path.
Thank you. Mr. Blazi, what would you do to aid in the hiring and retention of competent and equipped administrators in the school district to ensure a high standard of learning?
So I think with school teachers, I know the ones that I remember from thirty years ago um were the ones that were just actually invested in the kids. It wasn't just a day job. It was people that actually enjoyed, cared, were looking forward to finding at home. And kind of like what Karen was alluding to, the, the culture, I think, is a big item. You need to make sure that you have that built around any employee, regardless of its education or not. That's how you retain them. You need to be able to provide them with the extra education, with the extra care, with the extra voice um that they may need to flourish in their positions. And it, from what I've gathered so far in my daughter's first three years, we do an amazing job with that. And we just need to find those specific teachers that fill that gap and make sure that we find ways to keep them on staff.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blazi, how should A H I S D plan to integrate emerging technologies into our schools?
So uh, yeah, that's, that's a tough one, um, because you can't get too far. Like I, I personally still miss the days of the old Scantrons. Um, this new iPad idea is, is hard to get a grasp on. Um, but I, it goes along with everything else. There needs to be control. There needs to be some sort of a standard that we're following um so that it doesn't seem like screen time. Um, we, we need to make sure that everything that we do, everything that we implement is educationally based. We need to make sure that there's background behind it and statistics behind it. Um, because we have kindergartners that are four years old and up that are learning an iPad before some of these parents are ready to give it to them. Uh, so we need to make sure any technology that's provided out there isn't the best for our students.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Bryant, how should A H I S D plan to integrate emerging technologies into our schools?
Yeah, I mean, I think it is a case-by-case basis. And you know, what we've seen even in emerging technology with cell phones, right? We've kind of now gone in the opposite direction, and we have a cellphone policy that limits that during the school day because it has become a distraction. And I think that's been well-received by families along with teachers. Um, but in, in the classroom, I really do feel like it needs to be more of a support than it is the primary way that we're going to teach our children. Uh, handwriting is still very important. Working through math problems with a scratch pad is still very important. And I think the, the district understands that, and I, the board along with administration sees the value in that.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Bryant, do you believe that current social and political issues have a place in our district? Why or why not?
Well, I think that um, you're going to have the social and political conversation. And I think when it is in the way that we can teach children to critically think and make decisions, I think that that's important. Um, but I think when it is disruptive to a culture that we're trying to create, I would say that we probably want to limit that. So um, you know, depending on the situation at hand, I do feel like there is value when we're using it to teach children, uh, again, back to critically thinking. But if it's going to navigate and take over the conversation, then it might be too disruptive.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Blazi, do you believe that current social and political issues have a place in our schools? Why or why not?
I don't think we're gonna be able to avoid them forever. We're gonna have to make a collective decision on whatever's coming through the lines just so that we can support the teachers that have to deal with it every day. Because even though it may not be something that we feel like is necessary, I know as well as everybody else here that what my eight-year-old brings home every day is shocking on what's going around out there. Like you think that they're protected. Um, so we need to be able to stand behind the educators and the principals and the staff uh between all the schools to make sure that we're going after it collaboratively to get in front of it, to stay ahead of it, and to control it to the best of our abilities. But I don't think that it's gonna be fully able to be avoided.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Blazi, discuss an educational policy, procedure, or practice within the district which you believe needs to be changed.
Oh, that's a tough, um, so I, as I've kind of made it clear, I have a very young one. So there's a lot of this district that unfortunately I'm not as adept um on following. But what I do feel um that is out there that we can probably put more emphasis on is my oldest um has A D H D and uh dyslexia. And I do feel like we are supporting her in ways outside of the school district a lot more um than I had originally expected we would have to. And I'm sure that there's plenty of guidelines that direct that in that way that I'm still learning about. But I do feel like there's areas out there of improvement for special education purposes that we should explore more and find a better way to, to find the best solution toward them.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Bryant, discuss an educational policy, procedure, or practice within the district which you believe needs to be changed.
Well, this is a little tongue-in-cheek, but I would say any unfunded mandate that is coming down from the state should be. Just kidding. Um, but seriously, I, I do think that um, that the, the professional learning community communities that we've created for the teachers is something that is, I do believe that the teachers are enjoying. But there are some teachers that probably need a little bit more support in that regard as they're doing their curriculum and working with the students. And so it is more of the wraparound services that we would provide uh to the teachers in order to make them effective teachers in the classroom.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's all my questions. So we're here at our closing, and Ms. Bryant, you have two minutes.
Well, thank you again for your time tonight. I hope um to give you some interesting insight at my previous board experience and my professional skills and how I will approach many issues the school district faces. As I mentioned earlier, the decision to run for the board was not made lightly. And if elected, I will ensure our teachers feel valued, have a voice, and the resources to do their job. That administration is supported as they lead the district, and the children of Alma Heights have a top-tier education access. My priorities will be ensuring academic rigor for all children, recruiting and retaining top talent, and ensuring financial stability for the district. I will also ensure that the goals of the BOM 2023 program are retained, that safety and security remain a priority, and that we use technology in a proper way in our curriculum. Early voting starts tomorrow and goes through Tuesday the twenty-ninth with election day on May third. I appreciate the support of all that I've received so far from friends and even new friends. To find out more information, I would like, or if you'd like to volunteer, you can visit my website at W W W dot Karen or A H I S D dot com. Let me leave you with this last thought tonight. This process of running for the school board has been an experience. And it's somewhat as if you're interviewing for a public job. Um, as I think about criteria one might use to make sure the candidate is the right fit for the job, I think about four questions. Does the person understand the role that they're applying for and have the skills to be effective? Does the applicant have the time to do the job and will show up and work? Does the applicant have past experience and demonstrated success? And does the person get along with others? I believe I checked all those boxes, and I hope you will check the box for Karen Bryant, place two, for Alma Heights School Board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Blazi?
Oh, yes, so thank you all again for coming out. I appreciate it. Um, in closing, basically just as a reminder on kind of what I'm standing for as I go forward on this endeavor. Um, it's really students and educators. That's, that's what matters most in my book. Um, everything that I'm gonna be going after or following through with is gonna be putting them at the front of the fold for any discussion or decision. And I think that's the most important thing. We need to retain what we have in Alma Heights. We need to retain what everybody looks at us as in that form of excellence. We need to retain what everybody looks at us as in that form of excellence. And I just ask that whatever decision you make between me and Karen, both of us, we're going to be looking for that same thing. And it's really going to be down to y'all to determine which one is better fit for that, which one can roll that out in more of the unbiased, non-political way. As we discussed, we really don't need that to be part of the board. We really need to concentrate not on the distractions, but what's in front of us. A lot of people think that we have a lot of abilities to fight what's happening in Washington or Austin. And unfortunately, we don't have a lot of control over that. We're not having to be proactive like a lot of us want to be. We're having to be reactive against a lot. And I think having a calm and collective approach to that is going to be the best way to determine the best outcome. You can find more about me as well on my website, timforplacetwo.com. I know we're not taking Q and As, but I would greatly appreciate anybody reaching out to me for more information or discussion. Love to grab coffee and just understand what's going on in the public realm, what's bothering y'all, how we can fix it. Regardless if I get elected or not, I plan to share that with the board. And I appreciate everybody's support again. Thank y'all very much.
Okay. Well, thank you. And thank you both for being willing to serve. I believe public services have very high calling, and I appreciate both of you being here tonight to talk about your priorities and yourself and introduce yourselves to us. As has been mentioned, early voting starts tomorrow, runs through the twenty-ninth, and Election Day is May third. And I think that you can vote at the district office. Somebody tell me, no, I said nodding, nodding, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.